To those in person and also for those who are watching us live streaming, those attending in person at the Avalon School in Catalina, and also our board member who is joining us remotely. That was the word I was looking for? Yes. So I will now ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call to establish a quorum.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
And Member Otto?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And our student representative from Lakewood High School, Ms. Jayla Nelson, will lead us in the pledge. Jayla?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The Board took action on the following items. On item 3.1, the Board voted 5-0 to approve the expulsion of student ID number 201215945. On item 3.2, the Board voted 5-0 to dismiss classified employee number 00720088. On item 3.3, the Board voted 5-0 to approve the addendum to the Special Contracts for Temporary Employees and authorize district personnel to amend and sign all special contracts for temporary employees entered for the 2024-2025 school year. And now we're at adoption of the agenda.
With approval?
Second.
Any discussion? I will have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And next, we have our student board member, or student representative, I should say, from Lakewood High School. So Jayla, I'll have you come up to the podium, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Baker, Board members, and LPUSD guests. My name is Jayla Nelson, and it is an honor to be speaking in front of you all today on behalf of Lakewood High School as the 2024 ASB president. I want to thank Mr. Booth for allowing me this opportunity to be here in front of you all today. As a student who has had the privilege of attending Lakewood High School for the past four years, I've been fortunate enough to engage with the school community with both academics and extracurriculars. Throughout my time at Lakewood, I have been an active member and committed member of several programs and organizations, contributing to and benefiting from the school environment. My involvement in athletics as a member of both volleyball and beach volleyball, as well as the soccer team. In addition to my leadership roles in ASB, I currently serve as the Vice President of the Black Student Union. Throughout my years at Lakewood, I have been continually impressed by the events and activities that define Lakewood High School. Not only have I had the privilege of participating in these activities, but I've also had the opportunity to contribute to the development and execution of several events. One memorable and meaningful event I've had the privilege of witnessing and contributing to was our recent cultural fair that took place on November 22nd. This event was made possible by our pathway ambassadors and was a tremendous success in terms of its scale and the level of student engagement. The cultural fair provided an opportunity for students and faculty to experience and celebrate a wide variety of cultural traditions, values, and expressions, creating an inclusive and welcoming environment for everyone involved. The event highlighted not only ethnic diversity, but also celebrated the different sports, music, and art cultures that are major parts of our community at Lakewood. For many students, this was an opportunity to become more connected with the Lakewood community, which helped foster a deeper sense of belonging among all students. This event truly shows Lakewood's commitment to inclusivity and community building. Looking forward, I'm excited for another major upcoming event, our winter formal scheduled January 11th. This dance will be a collaborative effort with Long Beach Poly High School. We are working closely with their student leadership team to ensure that this event is both enjoyable and memorable for students from both schools. We are focused on making the dance a truly special occasion that will celebrate school spirit and partnership between Lakewood and Poly. Any student's time at Lakewood will be an incredibly enriching experience, one that will allow students' development and execution of several meaningful events that bring our school closer together. I look forward to continuing my involvement in creating positive and impactful experiences for my fellow Lancers. Thank you.
So Jayla, do you have somebody here you'd like to acknowledge? Somebody who's here to support you?
Mr. Booth, in the back?
Let's see. Do we have questions for Jayla? Dr. Benitez?
President Craighead, this winter ball with two schools sounds awesome. Is this something that's typical for two schools to get together to collaborate in this way? Could you share a little bit more about what, how that came to be?
Yeah. A lot of schools are working together. I know that Cabrillo is also having their winter formal with Jordan. And I think a lot of schools are just looking to collaborate to really build that school spirit.
That's awesome. I love that.
What are the plans for, after you graduate?
Definitely a four-year. I'm looking towards an HBCU, so Howard, Spelman, Hampton, schools like that.
Oh, that was a popular answer, by the way. Very popular answer. Well, we are so excited to have you here tonight. Wonderful to hear about all that. I think we're going to take a break and do a picture. So Jayla, we'll invite you to come on up, and we'll do some pictures. So we understand if you have homework or studying. Finals are around the corner, so you're welcome to stay if you'd like, but don't feel obligated to do so. It was very nice having you here. And now I'm going to turn everyone's attention to the screens so we can see our vision in action.
Drone soccer is a 5v5 competition where there's two teams. In each of those teams, there's one player trying to go into the other team's goal.
You don't have to specifically be in our engineering pathway to get into drone soccer. We invite anybody from any pathway.
Our teachers here at Cabrillo, they're really good at encouraging students to join programs like this. All the clubs, they're just really promoted here.
In all the other school districts that I've been in, I've never really had an opportunity like drone soccer. It's very nice, and it gives us more opportunity to see what's out there in the world. The competition is set up by US Drone Soccer. I love the way that they set up their double elimination. It gives them an opportunity to make their way through the competition and possibly win.
It was a really fun experience. I really enjoyed it, going with the team we had, being able to go all the way to Virginia to compete in a national tournament. And being champions is amazing.
We had the idea of, oh, we're going to try to at least win one or two matches. When we kept winning, we were like, hold on, what's happening?
Being able to say that you're competing for the United States is just something that not everybody could say, obviously. It's a huge badge of honor.
Being able to go all the way to Hong Kong to play drone soccer is a really amazing experience. And I'm going with my team, my amazing team. So I'm really glad I get to do it. I'm excited to see how we do.
So did I hear that correctly? They went to Virginia, but now they're headed to Hong Kong? Cabrillo High School drone soccer?
It's actually Germany.
Oh, it's actually Germany? They're, okay. So we have a drone soccer team from Cabrillo heading to Germany to compete. And when is this going to happen? Do we know?
I think it's March.
In March? Wow. Yeah, that is so exciting.
Don't they need a representative from the school board?
Yeah, chaperones. Huh. Yeah, we, I don't know. If you're going to throw your hat in the ring, you might as well. Yeah, that's very, well, I think I should go because I actually played drone soccer for approximately 30 seconds one time with our Sato students. No kidding. Somebody has a picture.
I have a student that's interested in drone soccer, so maybe I'm the better candidate to go.
We can fight about that later.
I looked it up.
Alrighty. So next on the agenda, we have public testimony, but I understand?
We don't have any speakers.
And we don't have any speakers, and we don't have speakers from Catalina?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So we will move on on the agenda. So 14, reports on superintendent advisory groups. We'll start with the Business Budget and Policy Development Group.
Thank you, President Craighead. I'll be very brief, but I'll say two things. One is, we have our next set of policies for our consideration. Some of these policies are updates. Others need to be developed and codified. So we'll have our next big chunk of policies in January. But I want to take an opportunity to thank the team for all the work that we've done this, the beginning of this school year, but this calendar year. I would encourage our community members. All the policies are on our website, as well as other items in the consent calendar. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. So just kudos to the entire business department team, our policy guru, Jeff, and the whole team, really, for working on what sometimes may go unnoticed in terms of updates, revisions to policies, adherence to things that happen at the state and federal level, and to my colleagues for taking the time to review and provide input and feedback to the policy. So next big round coming in January, President Craighead.
Thank you. And next, we have Instruction and Student Learning Supports. No report. Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to Workforce Development. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I don't have to report today.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Otto with Student Outcome Focus Governance?
So we have a big meeting on the 7th from 8:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon to talk about this topic. It's a retreat. It's for all of us to work on not only just the goals and guardrails, which we've spent a lot of time on, but now we're really moving into additional areas. And we're going to talk about all of these things, and it will be a great opportunity that we're all really looking forward to, I think, from this group.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our Consent Calendar A.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have, well, on 15.5, numbers 1, 5, and 8, I'd just like to acknowledge the Norris Foundation for donating $35,000 to CAMHS, the MacArthur PTA for donating $46,259.61 to MacArthur Elementary School, and to the Lauryn Hill Charitable Foundation for donating $100,000 to Long Beach Poly. And then I have a question for item 15.8, Board Policy 514153, the Grade K6 Suicide Prevention Plan. And just a question is that there's going to be training for teachers, and I'm just wondering if the training's going to start this school year or that training's for next school year?
Yes, the training is for teachers and all employees of the district, and it's part of our required district trainings. And those have already happened. And I believe we have until the end of this year, so December, for all employees to complete those trainings.
Any further discussion? In that case, we'll have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And Member Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item 16, Approval of Resolution 120424-A, Authorizing Chief Business and Financial Officer to Compensate Board Member Benitez for Absence at Board Meeting. So we need a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I will have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye, abstain.
Okay. And Member Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. And now we're at Report of Board Members and Announcements. And Mr. Miller, we'll start with you.
I have no report today.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Madam President, I'll actually take a moment to build on Mr. Otto's comments about what we're doing this Saturday. I have noticed over the last several board meetings that we haven't had as much public comment as we've had historically in our district. So I want to encourage our community members to please stay engaged and participate in any way that you're able to. Part of the shift that you've seen in our district the last 18 months to two years is a shift toward being more intentional about our focus on student outcomes. And part of that work is, the part of the piece of the work that's necessary for us to advance in that area is around governance. So I know that it's tough to get out here at 5:00 o'clock sometimes for our family members, community members. We're meeting on Saturday. We'll be here from 8:00 to 2:00, Dr. Baker, on Saturday? 8:00 to 2:00. It's a public meeting with a focus on what Mr. Otto touched on, right? And it's to build our district capacity, our board capacity, on moving forward on our student outcomes, on our board goals and guardrails. And a big part of that is governance. And a big piece of governance is public participation and civic engagement. So we are in the process of revising bylaws, which include how our agendas get set as a board, which include public participation at meetings, which include things like interpretation and translation for board meetings, time allocated to public comment, priority setting to what gets on our agendas, a role of the president and vice president of our board, conflict of interests is in there, procedural matters such as, you know, from time to time, you'll hear us, me included, stumble on some of our Robert's Rules of Order, right, our parliamentary governance. So these are important things for our board, for maximizing efficiencies in our district, and for us to have the ability to advance on these very important, critical goals that we have around student outcomes, our four board goals and guardrails. So I invite our community members. We know you could spend a lot of time doing other things on Saturday, but you have an opportunity here to help guide, inform, shape what this board, your board, will look like, how it will operate, how it will handle business, how we advance our community's vision for success, student success specifically, and what your role is in shaping that vision and monitoring that vision and holding us accountable to that vision around student success. So I do invite our community members to come out on Saturday. This is a very important meeting, and it doesn't just set by policy and procedures and bylaws how we do business, but it is also meant to uphold communities' involvement in how we do business. So I just extend the opportunity to our community members to please be a part of this. Please continue to stay engaged. Please continue to hold us accountable to your vision for student success. And one of the ways of doing that is by participating in public comment. That's my report for today.
Thank you. And I would just add that the meeting will be held at the EduCare facility.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, so our meeting on Saturday is from 8:00 to 2:00, and it will be held at the EduCare facility on Lemon. And that is next to Barton Elementary? That's next to Barton? Okay. The official address is 4840 Lemon Avenue. Yes. Okay. Mr. Otto?
Dr. Benitez did a very good job of sort of teeing up what we're doing, although it should be noted that we've been doing this for about a year now. And we're coming to this as the most significant or fecund moment for this group, meaning both the committee and also for the board. One thing that I've learned in governance work over a long period of time is you can't do it in a short time. You have to do it over time, and you have to do it with one another and with feedback. And that's what we're doing. But this is kind of the signature event of all the work that we've done so far. We have good consultants, including the guy that wrote the book that we've been using, and somebody that works very closely with him. And so I'm very much looking forward to this meeting on Saturday, and hopefully we'll make good strides forward in our governance. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, so as I reflect on the past two years of serving as your board member, and I'm speaking to the public here, I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for the trust you have placed in me. It's truly been an honor to represent you and work alongside our community to address the issues that matter most to us. Your support, feedback, and engagement have been invaluable in guiding my decisions and ensuring that our collective voice is being heard. As board members, it is incumbent upon us to listen and represent the interests of our constituents. With over 30 years of experience in K-12 education, I recognize and trust the responsibility that accompanies your vote. We are tasked, better yet, we are entrusted in making decisions on behalf of our students, our teachers, our parents, and our neighbors. Together, we have made progress on important issues, and I remain committed to working hard every day to ensure that your needs and concerns continue to be at the forefront of my efforts. It is crucial that we remain aware of the concerns of our community and utilize our oversight authority to ensure your voice is reflected in our policies and our practices. The decisions we make directly impact stakeholders. For this reason, I remain committed to listening carefully and providing my input and guidance by experience and education to the practices of our school district. I look forward to continuing this journey with you, and I remain dedicated to making decisions on your behalf. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve you, and I too highly encourage you to attend the meeting on Saturday as much will be discussed that will impact you. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing that I have to report on is the cultural fair at Lakewood High School. And Jayla already talked about that, so there's really not much more I can add, just that it was so wonderful to see the students at Lakewood High School be supportive of each other. They had the event in the courtyard area of the campus, and they utilized the stage. They had performers, dancers, representing different cultures. And the Lancer Nation was so supportive of each other. And they also had members of the community that were there, representatives from Long Beach City College, for example. Some, I forget who else was there, but it was such an uplifting event, and so wonderful to be around students that were so happy. And I want to mention also that that event is a student-led, student-organized, student-run event. I'm very impressed with how it all came together because they did a fabulous job. But I also want to recognize the administration at Lakewood High School for allowing the students to take that on and giving them the freedom to do so and supporting them in doing that. So all the way around, really wonderful. And I think that can stand as an example for other high schools because it worked out so well. So if you are representing a high school, maybe get in touch with somebody at Lakewood and find out how they did that. So Superintendent's report?
Thank you. I just have a few things to celebrate and a couple of announcements around things that will be going on in Long Beach. And so I'll just start by wishing our Avalon School a happy 100th birthday. This weekend, they will celebrate their 100th birthday with a gala that will take place out in Avalon. Mr. Moskowitz and I had an opportunity to be out at Avalon this week and just had a wonderful visit yesterday to classrooms and seeing students dropped off for school, interacting with a group of students who were just loved, telling the story about the community where they have been educated and what that means to them. We also got to congratulate their eight-man Division II football champions who won CIF. And I think it's the second time in history that they have won a CIF. So really exciting for them. I think they're waiting for their rings, or they're preparing for their rings. We also had Wilson High School, who lost their CIF championship by one point in the final seconds of the game. And there is an agony in defeat, but lots of learning, and just we're really proud of them even though that they lost by one point. A couple of upcoming things for our community to know. Tomorrow is the annual Hackathon that will take place from 5:00 to 7:00 at Sato. What a wonderful opportunity for our students to be involved in accessibility and inclusion of other students. Just thinking about our graduate portrait that calls out specifically that graduates are equity and inclusion leaders. This is a wonderful opportunity for them to engage in ensuring that every student in Long Beach, especially those with disabilities, have accessible and inclusive opportunities through toys and play and other devices that help them to thrive. And then two upcoming events that actually will be held on the same day in partnership with the City of Long Beach and a couple of other organizations. The Kwanzaa Experience will be held on Saturday, December 14th, from 10:00 to 3:00 at Halton Park, a wonderful celebration of Kwanzaa, crafts, music, refreshments, and featuring DJ Sunny. So hopefully our community will be out. Am I saying it correctly? Okay. Just want to make sure I pronounced Frank, as he is known. On the same day, a really important event for us, our inaugural HBCU College Fair organized by Jonah McGee and the Center of Black Student Excellence Team that will be held at Browning High School, same hour. So we're hoping that our community goes first to one and then joins in the other. 10:00 to 3:00 o'clock at Browning High School that will have HBCU recruiters, alumni panels, application support, and scholarship seminars. So a great opportunity for students who have visited HBCUs and those that haven't to really come and hear what college life is like at an HBCU. So a busy day. So a busy day around our city on December 14th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So for the Hackathon at Sato, do they need or welcome volunteers to help with the?
I am quite sure that adults who want to be there can be volunteers, can be encouragers. You can probably cheerlead from the side if you just want to watch and encourage people to, or the students that are working. Yes, you are welcome to be there.
And is that at 5:00?
It is from 5:00 to 7:00 at Sato.
Okay. Thank you. You have one more? Okay.
I remind people because it's an unusual time and date that we're going to have a swearing-in ceremony on the 13th, which is Friday, Friday night, the 13th, at 5:00 here in this room for Eric Miller and I, who are, I always want to say have been reelected, but I wasn't reelected. I didn't have an opponent. And so I just got to do this again, although that occurred in March. And I'm very excited because I remembered that it was gonna happen in December. I thought I might forget. But at any rate, it's a short ceremony, but looking forward to it. I haven't talked to Eric about his plans, but I know that I'm gonna be sworn in by Dr. Jane Conley of Cal State Long Beach. And we've had a good marriage with them, and as you may know, she is retiring at the end of the year. And so at this moment for education, it's good to celebrate all those things. So we're looking forward to it. It won't last all that long, and we're hoping people will attend.
Thank you. So just to clarify, we have a meeting Saturday at EduCare from 8:00 to 2:00, and then a week from this Friday, Friday, the 13th, the swearing-in. But our next regular board meeting is December 18th, I believe. Okay, so that concludes the business of the meeting. Unless there are any objections, I will adjourn and hope to see everyone soon. Thank you.